Hold the second, John. I knew I should have done it bigger point. John started with the Chilowack Fire Department in 1989. In 2000, he moved to Grand Forks and served with Grand Forks Rural Fire Department until integration in 206, then he moved to the Grand Forks Fire and Rescue. John currently has 20 years volunteering in fire service. John Feenster, come forward. Hello, John.
Hello.
We're going to take your picture here with your medal on this great award. You want to hold that? And I'll hold your medal for you. Thank you very much. And the next one is Dean Durely. Dean began with the Grand Forks Fire, Rural Fire Department in 1993, was a volunteer there for three years before moving to Grand Forks Fire and Rescue. Dean currently is captain with the department and has 20 years volunteering in fire service. Dean. Thank you very much for your contribution to the community. Get your picture with that. And Dean Bryant. Dean started with the Grand Forks Fire and Rescue in 1988 and moved to Grand Forks Fire and Rescue with the integration in 206. Dean currently is a captain with the department and has 25 years volunteering in fire service. Dean Bryant. Dean, thank you for all the support from the city. And rural area. The next recipient is Lyle Dorner, also known as Henry. Lyle started with the Grand Forks Fire and Rescue in 1988, is a captain in the department. Lyle currently has 25 years volunteering in fire service. Lyle Dorner. And our final is Lawrence Dorner. Lauren or Lawrence has began with the Grand Forks Fire and Rescue in 1988 and currently has 25 years volunteering with fire service. Lauren. Okay, let's get this straight this time, huh? Thank you all very much and thank you for the contribution you make as volunteers. We couldn't do it in the city without you. It makes a big difference to have such a trusted force. Thank you all very much. Want to bring your, 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 well, I got two of them. And your medals? Open up. Probably guys in the back, yeah. That's why me and you are there. Very welcome to stay. Okay, council, are you ready to go here?
Yep.
Maybe for Doug to come back. Give him a second here. Okay. Call this meeting to order. The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt? Councilor Doherty, Councilor Smith, all those in favor. We have two sets of minutes, the November 12th Committee of the Whole Minutes, a motion to adopt. So, Councilor Wires, Councilor Croft, all those in favor. And the November 12th Regular Meeting Minutes, motion to adopt. Councilor Shagan, Councilor Doherty, all those in favor. No petitions, delegations, then we're down to council reports, starting with, how about Councilor Smith?
Yeah, sure with that. With this last reporting period, I attended as liaison for the Phoenix Foundation. I attended their, their community social at the art gallery. It was very well attended. Would have liked to have seen more politicians out there because they're trying to get some money from too. But, yeah, it was very, it was very good. They're looking, of course, in the next year and some of the preliminary meetings have taken place to start another vital science, which is sort of like a community report card. And so, the one that was done five years ago now, they figure in certain categories, it's time to kind of update that, that report card and see where we've moved on it and where this community might direct its efforts. In particular, the Phoenix Foundation may direct its efforts to improve in those areas. This year, they gave away $31,000 in, in grants to a wide variety of community groups. And they've launched a new program called 1.8 by 2018. And what they want to do is increase the, the fund, the trust fund, so that it's increased by 1.8 million dollars by 2018. That's, that's the goal anyway. And over the life, they've given out, because it's now 16 years, $400,000. So, that's to all of local community groups in the Boundary Region. And then on, of course, on the 22nd, I attended their committee meeting and there were some robust discussion there about the, the, name of the committee?
Little.
Not Little, uh.
Cranbrook?
Oh, no. Someone that just won the court case. And the mayor, sorry. Yeah, so there was some discussion about where this committee might go based on that information and where also the application is out for the Well Save BC Program Coordinator for Grand Forks. So, that is closing on the 27th and I understand there's been a couple applicants. We're looking forward to keep moving this on. Municipal Ticking Biolab, we look at the draft of that to incorporate, so.
For deer feeding.
For deer feeding, yeah. So, we'll be bringing that, all that stuff up to the next Committee of the Whole, so that council can discuss it. And I was at the grand opening for the MAPS, the, of the.
Agency.
Agency.
Accommodation project.
Accommodation.
Yeah, that's the one. And that was very well attended and it was good to see our MLA, Linda Larson out there, a couple of our counselors and, of course, yourself. And it looks like it's a great project. The facility is just fabulous, so I think they've done an awesome job at it. If there's any kind of community war that we can give to some of the guys who put that thing forward, certainly think they deserve it.
Yeah, I think we need to go back, I was saying, and brag it up. I think that is a model that will do well in other communities and that we should be proud of.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilor Croft?
Just one thing, I attended the, the annual wine tasting at the gallery along with counselors. Shagan and.
Did you do it?
Yes, and, and Councilor Smith. Yeah, it was well attended and it looked like it might have been one of the better ones they, they've had. People seem to be having a real good time. Of course, and there's wine, so that kind of says it all. And that's it for what I have right now.
There was, there was actually some strategy in how people attended it because it was all started down at the bottom and then moved up. So, half the people went upstairs to start with and down and then they just.
Yeah.
They were dumber.
Training was working. Did they, did they also have beers and various other breweries?
Yes, two breweries, but no other spirits.
Because there are rumored to be some wineries interested in developing footballs in this valley.
Nope.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Great. And Councilor, that's it?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Wires?
Your worship, November the 13th, I attended the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Congress AGM that was held at Gallery 2, so they have a new executive for 2013, 2014. Looking forward to their activities in the coming year. November the 14th, the Boundary Restorative Justice Group met as part of their monthly schedule. Of significant note was that the referrals from Crown Council and the RCMP have dropped off significantly. They're told that this is due to the reduction in crime, but we are doing, they are doing a follow-up with Crown Council and the RCMP to ensure that, plus we're going to be, they're going to be going out to the public with opportunities for resolutions among, even among neighbors and students of those types of nature that we can work in the general public. And November the 14th, I also attended the Phoenix Foundation of the Boundary Countries' Reception at Gallery 2 and there I did hear that Councilor Smith was informing us about the, their vision to raise 1.8 million dollars by 2018. So, building a better boundary together is certainly on their radar. November the 16th, I attended the Story of Food, a very interesting session, all-day session. The next chapter was, was the title of the workshops and that, that they held. They, there will be a follow-up session on January the 11th, so I'm part of their mailing list now. I joined the Agriculture Society and looking now to move on to joining the Cattle, Cattle Valley Food Go Up. Yes. And you can go online to join, get signed up for veggies and that. Okay, November the 17th and 18th, I attended AKBLG, bi-monthly meetings in Creston on behalf of Boundary Area. The upcoming AGM is April 9th to the 11th and it will be held in Creston in 2014. Attending the meeting, one of our sessions was UBCM President Brona Martin, she's the new president for UBCM. And she informed me that she's the liaison on behalf of UBCM for the Head Start for Young Women program. So, we quickly exchanged cards, only to note, she noted my husband's last name. She's from Kinnamatt, they grew up together. So, small world.
Network development.
Network development, yeah, yeah. It's quite, quite interesting. So, Brona will, and I will be speaking regarding the Head Start for Young Women program, which I can also announce that I have, have organized an orientation session this Thursday at the library at, that's November 28th, at 4:15 PM to speak with a group of young girls who have expressed an interest in being part of this program. And let me see, November the 20th was a, I attended a Boundary Businesswomen's Group that has started up in Grand Forks and it follows the format of the group that has been running for a number of years over in Castle Guard, that one of the businesswomen in our community had attended faithfully for many years and so she started one up here. And on the third meeting, we had 14, 14 businesswomen out to this meeting, so a lot of networking going on there. Grand Forks District Public Library, their, and their annual, well, their monthly meeting was held on November the 20th. They'll have a staff party coming up for their staff and the board on December the 6th. Also, they have a cookie sale coming up December the 3rd, that's Tuesday, so it'll, the doors open at 10 o'clock, so you can pick up your cookies for Christmas. From Friends of the Library. I'll be over there helping them send out cookies. Their financial report to date, as of their financial report is of October 31st, they were at 83% and well below budget. The librarian report, of, of another note fundraiser that the Friends of the Library had, they raised a record-breaking $1,778 from the book sale recently and $500 from the Clyde's fundraiser. And that's when our local, one of our local restaurants donates a percentage of the proceeds on a specific day and, right up, they donated $500 and that was from Clyde's. And circulations are up, especially at the Christina Lake outlet that they have. And they received a letter of commendation from Area Director Grace McGregor, Area C, on the services that they're providing for her community. And they're moving into, they've also submitted their 2014 proposed operating budget to the Regional District, so I'm sure we'll see that in some communication to the Regional District. November the 21st, the Environment Committee met at the Regional District Boardroom and we did go over our new meeting format, but there is one item that the Environment Committee would like me to fast-track at this, one of their recommendations, and that was approved at November 21st. And I just wanted to bring it to council this evening. And the reason why we wanted to bring it forward now is because the next Committee of the Whole isn't until December the 16th, which we'd like to see this started and completed to the 2013 budget. And I'm sure you'll agree that it's, it's, it's a doable request. But the motion was to design, a recommendation to council to design a Riparian Area Education Sign for a City Park Location where we have the Riparian Area with consultation on design and content from Jenny Colso and Graham Watt. Funds to be allocated from the 2013 Environment Committee budget and not to exceed $1,000. And that's the motion that they asked me to bring forward and recommendation from, from that committee to be fast-tracked this evening. Also, the reason why they wanted to fast-track this and, and have a sign, we thought it would be a nice, appropriate to recognize the work that the resilient environmental engineers did with us this summer. So, we'd like to have their, that part, their contribution also noted on the sign, either with their names or the, the project that they represented, the organization that they represented. So, I'm bringing that to council at this time and.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. I'm wondering, Mr. Allen, if I could ask you, are, are you ready for this? Do they have money in the, in the environment budget? Is that?
Mr. Mayor, what we do is we just review the remaining funds in the budget and then we have to talk about the concept behind this, the sign, kind of conceptually what it's going to look like and the location, but it is very doable, so the motion, if council wishes to proceed on it, to, to put on the floor to discuss it.
Okay, so it's on the floor for discussion.
The budget 2013?
Yes, yes.
The year's existing budget.
2013, okay.
And Councilor Smith?
So, who would be looking after designing it and all that concern? Would be directing the staff, come up with something or?
I, what I'm hearing is that that would be within a $1,000 budgeted amount at this point.
In consultation with the professionals who sit at the Environment Committee, Jenny Colso and Graham Watt. As we speak, as we were discussing it, they were already designing it with the anticipation that the city would, would invite them to be part of the information that goes on the sign. They're recommending about a three, but by four foot sign.
Okay. All right. Councilor Shagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, I guess. The first one is neither Ms. Colso or Mr. Watts.
Watt.
Watt. Robert Roberts. Aren't getting paid for any of this, this is all volunteer, they will not be receiving any.
That's correct.
Okay, and the second part is, I like the concept, I'll support it. I'm just not too sure about the naming of the, of the two students that were here on that sign because I feel that if they start putting people's names on signs such as that, there's a lot of people that do a lot of work in this community, I'm worried if they start putting a lot of names on a lot of signs if we start.
We felt just the recognition of the project that.
The project, yes.
Was it about?
Community Bureau of International Education.
That's right.
Obviously, for the, the personal names, I would not.
Okay, so I'm taking this as a fairly loose motion in terms of the budget and a request for further information by our CAO and so that in consultation, we, we should get something. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, what we could do if it, who would help council, we could, we could bring it back, the concept, the concepts back once everybody's kind of approved it, because we're not going to be putting it in over the winter months. We can bring it back, council could see what the options look like, what the Environment Committee chose and then it would be before council for that final kind of touch on it if they, if they so choose.
And your desire was to have this into this year's budget so that we get it done.
We wanted the invoicing in that process to all start because the intention is, your worship, is, is we'd like to make this an annual program with the Environment Committee for Riparian Protection.
To do other areas, another project.
Other signage and other areas.
Okay, so I think this leaves enough latitude here in terms of our staff being able to put this together and bring it back to us and they will certainly meet the criteria of fitting into this year's budget. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Hold, carry.
Did we have a second?
Yes, Councilor Doherty asked you if you would second it.
Okay, well, I made the motion, so he signed. Okay, we're good. There we go.
There we go.
Okay, so thank you very much. I have one last comment and that was, I also attended the Multi Accommodation Agency Project here, their, their grand opening on Saturday, November 23rd. And what a compliment for this community, wow, they did a spectacular job. I mean, I, I hope you're going on a road show, your worship, with that organization because.
I have asked if they would gather information.
Yes.
Use in a presentation, maybe at AKBLG.
I, because appropriately, I did bring up at AKBLG about that project as well.
I think we should be pleased to know.
Yes. And that's the completion of my report.
Thank you very much, Councilor.
Councilor Doherty? I saw your report and I'll get some cookies. Your worship, in the last two weeks, I've been busy with Whisper of Hope, a shelter bed and habitat for humanity. Got all the plumbing, all the heating done and it was a nice job, which I don't need a lot of time, but I really enjoyed it. And on Saturday, I was down at the grand opening with the, with council and yourself and I met with Linda Larson, her husband, it was a great day. And, you know, so everybody was very, very happy about the building and the setup in there. And in the arena, the minor hockey is doing great, the women's are doing good.
I went to a game.
Yeah, yeah. So, it was good. And everyone by at 5 o'clock today on Second Avenue with the Christmas light are all the way down there. So, everything looks wonderful. Thank you, that's it for me.
I understand you had to, to quite a challenge in getting the hair out of the plumbing system at the Whisper of Hope there.
Yeah, that was.
It used to be a veterinary clinic and I was gushing a lot down those suit.
The suit, we work hard there.
Well, you did a lot of work too and very much appreciated that, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Shagan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just mention one item here and that's that the GF5 AGM is tomorrow, we think, at 7:00 PM at Community Futures. So, the individual wants to get involved, if they're watching at home, it's, it's a good time, membership's $5, you can buy them at the door when you enter and if you want to give up some of your time for a good cause, for, for a good event in this town, tomorrow 7 o'clock, get found you. Great Community Futures, is this what it's said? That's what happened.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments to make on the MAP project. I wish they'd get a better acronym. However, I think this is a really good example of council taking big jumps to, to meet the kind of expectations the community put on us. You know, five years ago, we were basically looking at the fact that that disenfranchised population was the most neglected in our town. And I think that what we've been able to accomplish in cooperating with these community groups is going to make a big difference over the next little while. And there was a lot of recognition by those groups for the, the kind of participation of a cooperative city hall, so again, my hats off to all of us. Thank you. And the motion to accept the council reports, Councilor Doherty seconded, Councilor Fiyers Saldo's in favor. Regional District news, a couple of things have come up that are important. One, we had a special meeting called in Trail to do with the 911 service. And the big issue is that there was a motion at that meeting, they, they went over the complicated situation with our, our service out of Kelowna with the RCMP contract, a lot of stuff that's quite complex, but what it came down to was that people are basically not having house phones anymore and so the, the need is to generate some revenue based on your other telephone devices, whether that's a tablet or your cellphone. And so, the motion that the Regional District would like us to support, and it will come forward to us in a written form once it's been beat around a bit more by the Regional District, it would be to, to support a surcharge on electronic devices that would cover some of the cost of the 911 service. And so, they'll be looking for support to bring that concept to AKBLG and they felt and I think I supported that we do need to fund this service, it's essential and the And the report that we had in front of us was that we can do it better and cheaper, but we still need revenue. So this will be coming forward to council. And there will be a lot more information given to you with that motion that you're being asked to support. Can I ask, are there any comments on that particular issue, Councilor Crog?
Yeah, just I'm going anxiously await some more information, possible justification for trying to put that in something. Like I know I already pay on my phones.
Your house phone?
911 surcharge, and I believe also on my cellphone.
On your cellphone, there is a surcharge, but it's not for the service. It's for something else. It's a confusing state, but that is not basically to provide your 911 service. There's a surcharge, but I think it's related to another aspect that did come up.
And to put them on to tablets and stuff. I think if you want to, if they want it, they should be looking at putting them on in the PS4s and Xbox Ones.
I don't know, you know, you really deserve a lot more information.
Yeah, I need some more information.
It's for gaming overdose.
No, they're not talking a lot. We're talking like a matter of 25, 35 cents a month is all it's going to take to... And you know, the other place where that money's going to come from is the taxpayer. So either we have a usage fee on telephones and devices, Councilor Wires.
Your worship, that is pretty interesting, because I myself, I've given up our landline.
Yes, a lot of people are.
And, you know, it is... It's certain financially, so good to hear that they're going to take a resolution for it.
Two other items. Animal control contract. We are going to have a visit from the commissioners in the new year. But also, I'm really feeling that we should, as a group, be putting more pressure on for a new animal control bylaw that we've been talking about for so long, particularly since we're moving in with our ticketing and various other kinds of things that overlap with the animal control bylaw. And so I'm on your behalf, I'm going to start putting a bit more pressure. Councilor Wires?
Yes, Your Worship, will you please? Because it's long overdue.
And we did pass a motion once already, and I went forward with that. We didn't limit the contract to one year, but we didn't get the, we didn't get the new draft bylaw. Thank you. And the other thing is kind of a general issue, but it's coming up more and more. People are asking me in terms of variety of things, like taxation and services and other things. We need to look at comparisons with the regional district. And so I would informally at this point, discuss this matter with our CAO in terms of beginning to look at some comparisons. We have a number of relationship things that are going on with the regional district. Can we not take a closer look at our comparisons of critical factors between those that live in the regional area and those that live in the city? I think it's timely, and I'm not expecting it to take a lot of staff time, but I think there are chances that we can use. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering if it could be acceptable if council wanted to do this, if we could make it part of our budget comparisons like we did last year, when we showed where we cussed it from a taxation perspective. Maybe we could show the representation in Area D and C, maybe compared to our tax dollars that we pay. And count on a report card what type of services you get for being in the city versus being in the regional district.
That's the idea.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. So I won't add for a motion on that, and we have some discussions going on. And that's my regional district report. I'll answer any questions on the argument. Councilor Crog?
Have they chosen to rename yet?
No, no, they haven't. No, those things did get floated out again, and now there's been no conclusions on that. Okay, hearing none? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Did you make a motion?
Nope.
That's why I had to make a motion to accept the report.
Councilor Shaggin, he's got a streamline and things like that. Okay. Recommendations from staff. The community events and organization support policy. This is one that we've beaten up quite a bit. And we're looking for a motion to adopt. Councilor Smiths, Councilor Doherty. Discussion, Councilor Smiths?
I think this is a great distillation of conversations that council and staff have had, and I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you very much, and good work by our staff. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And the council's schedule, meeting schedule for 2014. This is recommending, or this is deciding and putting it into the schedule for the whole year. Motion, Councilor Smiths, seconded. Councilor Doherty. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And the renaming of the Grand Forks Arena. I'm assuming at this point, Councilor Shaggin, could you speak to this? That this is really an opportunity for us to recognize someone who's made a major contribution to this community and to, in particular, to the arena.
Yeah, absolutely, I can. This issue came up at the recommission table, and Mr. Goddard Jr. brought it forward, him and his wife, they made a presentation. And it's, it was Jack Goddard's, he was, from what was presented to us, he was a man who was very project-oriented. The arena was his baby, it was what he wanted. He wanted to see what was going to really, through volunteer helps, through his hard work, through the projects committee that he struck, they were able to accomplish this, as well as getting a booth baseball started. He was very big in recreation sports within this community. He was a councilman for many terms, three terms, I believe, and the mayor for about the same, I think, three terms as well, somewhere in there. And it didn't take much. We just, with the Grand Forks, a lot of our facilities are named after people. When it comes to parks, there's a motor park, buildings are often named after people. And this was unanimously approved at the recommission level to rename the arena. I guess this is just looking for us to endorse what's been decided at that level. It's not for you, it's for us to decide.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah.
And seconded? Councilor Doherty. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Goddard, all those in favor? Thank you. And the acting mayor appointments for the coming year, starting with Councilor Kendall, and moving through the rotation. Motion to approve. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Wires. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? The next is, are the information items, and we have two items. The building inspection bylaw services on the cleanup at the Sandy property. Received for information, for those of you that looked over it. Mr. Allen, do you have any comments you want to make on this?
I don't know. Well, just, Mr. Mayor, it's like to let you know that we are working towards this, and this is part of, you know, council working with the community when there is a bit of a challenge. The staff is trying to definitely work with them, rather than using kind of the heavier hand approach. We're trying to make sure that we are, you know, giving them the opportunity, because we know there are other circumstances that create delays in the process. So the owner has basically shown really good positive signs in cleaning it up. So we'd like to continue down this path until any other steps would be required.
Great, thank you. This is received for information. Councilor Doherty seconded, Councilor Smiths, all those in favor? The next item is the Christmas dinner. We have traditionally donated $500 to this event. Motion to that effect. Councilor Doherty? Or Councilor Crog? Councilor Shaggin. Discussion. Does this fall within your definitions? I mean, this is one of those items that is a traditional donation of the city towards this particular annual event, which has grown from a small little dinner down at the Legion to a major community event because of groups like us supporting it, basically.
I just wondered if there's any conflict with our current, current name. I'd hate to see it go away, but I'm still respecting that we just adopted a new, a new policy with respect to that.
Yeah, in my mind, it fits the criteria. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I think for the remainder of 2013, you know, in order for us to actually really bring it forward and demonstrate how this new policy's going to work, it'll allow us the time to present all the information in the budget, because the new policy does require everything to be presented in the budget format. So this does kind of fit the flavor somewhat, but I guess it's still dependent upon council at that time and these community events. So we would bring it back to that piece in the budget process. But when we bring forward the budget, and if you want to call it the presentation for this category, council has the ability to either support or not support these events, because they seem to be the annual requests. Whether it's a Legion poppy fundraiser, or the smaller components, and then give council the opportunity to discuss that at that point at the beginning of 2014.
So we will capture this in our budgeting process?
Absolutely. And that would be the time that council would say to us, because we've budgeted for this year. So if council wants to remove this type of thing, that would happen. But I think at this point in time, it does fit some of the flavor of the policy.
Okay. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Carried? And on to bylaws. This is the bylaw to repeal, 1884, first, second, and third reading. Do I understand how we can do those first, second, and third as one motion?
You can do it, Mr. Mayor, if you like to. Council can give it all three readings, one reading. So council can approve the first three readings of the bylaw and vote on approving the first three readings. You don't have to separate them.
No, thank you. Okay, so we're looking for first, three readings, first, second, and third reading. This is basically repealing the old deer feeding bylaw. Councilor Smiths, Councilor Crog? And discussion, Councilor Shaggin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just out of curiosity, and being that I'm not exactly sure if we support this or not, inasmuch as it will take us to support the repealing bylaw. There's a lot that's going to hit on the answer to this question, I suppose. How many times was this bylaw that we're looking to repeal right now, which is essentially sort of binding somebody who was to give out information to them? How many times did we use it? How many people did we actually send out information to?
Just a next little question. I'm not sure we have that available, Councilor Smiths?
Well, I think the bylaw is essentially toothless, right? So where, what information was available was probably, say, on the front counter of City Hall. And since we had, and since we had no bylaw enforcement officer, the best we could do was with what we had, which was basically nothing. So the intention now is to support, support the information giving to enforce the bylaw before the monetary steps come into play. It's, it's, it just gives the bylaw enforcement officer the ability to do his job.
Okay, I'm not sure if that's what Councilor Shaggin is asking, but I'm wondering if you could clarify what intention you would have in terms of asking for that information?
Well, the question is, is that we're looking at a ticketing process, but the situation is such that I think there is an issue with individuals feeding deer. However, if we start finding some of these individuals who are feeding deer, it's not making deer problems go away. And before I take those steps, I'm not exactly sure that... If we haven't tried this yet, and by that I mean giving out information, I don't necessarily think we should be repeating something we haven't tried, because we don't know if it's worked yet, if those individuals have learned through the informational process as opposed to taking them. Whether or not, if we haven't tried this...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that we...
Okay. And, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I think just to further elaborate on what Councilor Shaggin is going... The new education processes, there's an education, wildlife awareness officers going to be hired as part of the process that council approved. This new bylaw would then be, you know, once council gives us further direction that they want us to act on enforcing this, once we've exercised that, we would bring that back to council, to state council. Do you want us to enforce this bylaw now? So I think the education process has to be undertaken. A new wildlife war process is going to be important for us to introduce to the community, because we really haven't had a platform to do it. We're basically just kind of, you know, we don't really have... We can take excerpts from other communities, but really, what's the Grand Forks animal or wildlife issue? So as we bring that forward and we do that, then what we would do is we'd come back to council and we'd say, at committee of the whole, we would do a report saying that we've completed the education campaign. Mayor Council, would you like us to now enforce your new deer feeding bylaw? It'll close those steps, or reduce the steps that we'd have to take, because council has the ability to either say to staff, either you simply go to the awareness campaign, or we would like for you to enforce our bylaw now. At that point in time, it does allow the person to come forward and challenge that to council. So there is opportunities if people could challenge the enforcement of the bylaw.
Thank you, and Councilor Doherty?
So for the administrator, it will be enforced until it comes to liking the community of the whole?
I think that would be up in the direction of council. So council could pass that direction on to staff, that we want to use this as an education campaign first, and then we'd like for you to start enforcing the bylaw after the wildlife war program's been introduced. Council can still, council holds that authority to do that with direct staff in that direction.
Councilor Doherty, that answers your question?
Yeah.
Councilor Smiths?
Yeah, again, I think it's cleaning up the bylaw. And, you know, because it's pretty clear, I think, in the draft of the one that's going to be coming up, that there are those precursors, or precursory measures that must be completed prior to, you know, throwing tickets at people, so...
Yeah, in my opinion, it's a much better written bylaw, too. This other bylaw had a lot of holes in it, and was meant for different things. Wasn't meant for enforcement.
I just want to mention, too, that of course, this isn't the only means by which the deer committee is hoping to manage our deer issue here. You know, again, call is one of them. So if we can tackle these things in a kind of comprehensive and integrated way, I think that's the best approach to do it. And if this is just a tool in the toolbox, whether it comes to using it or not, it's better to have it, not use it, than need it and not have it.
Okay. Further discussion? First, second, and third reading is on the table. All those in favor? Opposed? Councilor Shaggin?
Yes.
And, again, this is not final reading. We just did first, second, and third.
That's right.
Making that clear. The next item B is the new bylaw, the new deer feeding bylaw that has the penalties, that has better, more comprehensive wording, and would ask for first, second, and third reading on bylaw 1967. Councilor Smiths? And seconded? Councilor Crog? Again, this is first, second, and third reading, not final reading, so we have some room to work on this.
I'm just going to come back, Your Worship, in grand word.
Yes.
Okay. For the final...
December.
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 December 16th, yes.
December 16th at the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Councilor Shaggin? Thank you. And the next item of business is the Financial Plan Amendment bylaw. This is one that we did discuss at a fair length in the committee of the whole. And again, first, second, and third reading to this bylaw, basically adjusting it for all of those financial decisions that we have made over the past couple of months. Councilor Wires moves, Councilor Doherty seconds. And discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And the municipal ticketing bylaw number 1957, first, second, and third reading is what we're looking for. This again goes through all of the individual offenses and puts fines and penalties to them. We're looking for a first, second, and third reading of this bylaw. Councilor Smiths? Councilor Doherty? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Councilor Shaggin is opposed. We have no items, and I'm open to questions from the public. Mr. Smith, how are you? Welcome to speak to us at this point and say... Welcome to speak to us at this point and say?
I want the turd. I don't think you can handle it, but anyway. What I'm here to discuss tonight, I've talked to a lot of people in town, and they're very upset about water meters coming in.
Yes.
Have you verified this as positive or negative so far?
Well, and the feedback we're getting is primarily positive. I think some people have misconceptions about what this might cost, and I did erase some stuff on the board here that Mr. Allen had put up, because we weren't taking pictures there, sorry.
Sure.
In fact, the cost to the individual taxpayer, if you're not watering a lot of stuff outside and various kinds of things that we could give a green credit for, but your internal consumption, we're not expecting that the cost will go up to the consumer, but it will save the city a massive amount of money in the long run and potentially allow us to reduce some of our infrastructure costs. So, it really has been very positive. The other bottom line is the government's not going to give us a penny for anything we do with our infrastructure if we don't have water metering in place. That's the plain and simple message of the government. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I could just touch on a couple things right away, just to help address the question. Right now, we currently have to replace our infrastructure with pipes that are larger than our capacity, and what we have to do with that, as we go through our asset management plan, replacing a, for instance, a larger water main, because we don't know, we don't have any water conservation going on, would cost us in the neighborhood, it'll save us millions of dollars right from the get-go. As soon as we reduce our consumption by 25%, we can replace our water mains with smaller water mains, we can replace our sewer mains with sewer, smaller sewer mains, rather than just building larger for the sake of building larger, we're actually living within our means as a community. We're not just simply buying a big truck because we need a big truck, we actually buy exactly what we need. When we talk about comparison of water for a community, 220 gallons of water equals one cubic meter, and that's how we would bill. Now, we've seen different ranges of prices in the open organ all the way through, we've seen it from 30 cents a cubic meter to a dollar a cubic meter. So, as we look at this, when you take this, 220 imperial gallons of water is equal to one cubic meter of water. 1,000 liters of water equals one cubic meter. Typical average person right now in our community is using 720 liters per capita per day. So, that's under 1,000 liters, so that would be, if we're at a rate structure between 30 cents and a dollar, we're at 720 per capita per day. We reduce our consumption by 25%, we're actually looking at being around 500 liters or so, somewhere in that range, a reduction, and then we would be at around, depending on our rate structure, we'd actually be able to save money. It's yard irrigation that costs us the money. So, just another example is 54 of the countertop jugs that you put on those dispensers equals one cubic meter of water. 54 of these is $540, a $10 a jug. So, that's why we value water. 2,500 milligram water bottles equals a cubic meter of water. That would be $2,000 if you were stopped at the Shell station to buy a bottle of water, a dollar a piece. So, that's $2,000. If we're valuing, we're way undervaluing our water if we do it between 30 cents and a dollar a cubic meter. So, when we look at the actual overall consumption of water in our community, we look at it this way, internal consumption within the house is between 7 and 10% of our overall consumption. The rest is outside yard irrigation, industry, and agriculture. So, if we look at this 7 to 10%, inside the home, you actually should be able to save money, depends on how you irrigate your yard. And really, what it comes down to for the community is protecting the groundwater's aquifer, because we know that's not a finite, it's a limited resource of water. As soon as we've drawn that thing, we've tapped it dry, and we cause problems to that aquifer, we're going to be in trouble as a community, because we would have to go to a tapping off the rivers and go to full water treatment. We're actually in a position where we're actually going to be saving money in the long run for our community. But this is a big area that I think people need to think about from our perspective. In winter months, we only use the water that we actually need to use. When we start talking about this from an irrigation perspective in the yards, I think people are misconceived about how much they need. And if you actually take a tuna can and put it over your yard, as soon as it's full, that's all you need for your water for your lawn for a week. But people like to water their lawn every night. If you take a frisbee and throw it upside down in the grass, as soon as it fills up with water, that's enough for the week, and that's what the scientists are telling us. That's not something that we're making up. I think this stuff will actually see that the community will get better benefits in the long run. But I think the biggest piece is meeting council strategic initiatives from the asset management investment plan, living within our means, and also protecting the groundwater's aquifer, because we know that that won't go on forever, and we have to do all we can to protect it today. And I think the Kettle River watershed study is a sound, sound study that's being undertaken right now, that'll help us today preserve the water in our community for a very long time. So, I think the process here is, once we go into our open houses and we start talking about this, I think the community will better understand, and they will understand that this is not meant to be punitive, it's meant to simply pay for things as you go, because right now, your electrical meter is based off, you pay for what you use. Right now, it's an equal system, so if I choose to use way more water than my neighbor, we all pay the same. And we know from our hydro bill, or gas bill, or other bills, we pay, we want fair billing, and that allows you to be at the consumer, control what you're paying for. So, I think that there's so many benefits to it, and I think we'd like to just have the time to bring it forward. But I think the mayor was very accurate, too. The provincial government said to us, don't even apply for grant funding unless you've got your water meters in place. And to that, the gas tax funding is paying for our water meters, therefore, it's not costing our customers anything, because the gas tax funding has got a structure, how you can use it, it's about this big. And those are the criteria, that you either do one, two, or three, and that's it. So, they're giving us $1.3 million, and they're saying, essentially, they said to us in the long run, use it for water metering. We've applied for grants for putting in the water meters, but we've been declined, and they're suggesting that the gas tax funding is there. So, it will not have a direct impact on our customers from a taxation level. So, there is a lot of positives to it, and I would just like the opportunity for the community to give us a little bit of time to get that message out there. We've been doing water conservation messaging, we're planning on having an open house in January 22nd, and we're going to follow that up with another open house after we've got the contractor selected. And I think at that time, the community will grow to understand and appreciate water meters, because if we're one of the few communities in DC and across Canada that don't have water meters, it's where we're all going in water conservation across Canada. So, in a sense, I mean, I would love to be able to answer more questions for anybody at that time, but we will have more information at our open houses, and we'd love to be able to ask lots of community, because this is a good thing, and I think that there is a perception of that, that it could potentially be bad, but it is really a good thing for us.
It almost should, the way you're explaining it, and you're far beyond most people, so what, you know, as a comparison, let's say I'm paying 50 bucks a month for water right now, and after you go through all this, what is my cost factor going to be? More, less, how much?
So, tell them that story about the guy that you dealt with.
Well, yeah, we'll get right to that one. When we get to 2014 is when we're going to install the meters. 2015 is when we're going to recommend to council that we create what's called a mock billing. And the mock billing, we will go to our customers and we'll say, Mr. Customer or Mrs. Customer, this is what you have, here's your concerns, let's talk about your water conservation strategy, so you can save money in your home. If you go out here, if you put in low-flow toilets and you displace the water in the tank, and you put a beer mug in there, or put a brick in there, you can displace, and over the long haul, you'll save a little bit of money. It's your yard irrigation that's going to save you the money. So, I had one gentleman in the open organ come to me and say, some of the questions we were talking, he wrote letters to the newspaper, and he said to me, question after question, he said, he finally got to the point where I said to him, I said, Mick, I will bet you money, based on his criteria, he said, I live alone, my wife is passed, I live alone, I just have my dog, I don't water the yard. And I said, Mick, I guarantee you, your water bill will drop. And he said, I'll take that bet. And he said, I'll bet you dinner. So, we bet dinner, his water bill dropped from $350 to $219. So, he owes me dinner stills, we haven't taken him up on it. But the concept is there for those to save, it's like if you went through the energy diet in your home, and you put in, you know, the windows, and you did the doors, you sealed everything up, you put the high efficiency person, you make a small investment to save some money in the long run. And I think that once people come to understand this process, they will save money in the long run. But the mock billing period for the year of 2015 that we'll recommend to council will take us to 2016, which will then, we'll be establishing the rate structure, someone will say to council, now in January 2016, probably into November of 2016 or so, we'll be talking about the rate structure, will allow our customers to really understand what their water billing looks like, will make sure that we're funding the utility properly, and the water utility will, the customers on the utility will be using the, understanding their consumption factors. Because once they get into this piece here, that mock billing period will tell them, wait a minute, my problem is, because we have four quarters, it's Q1, Q2, Q3, and Q4, and this is the quarters of the year, so this is where everybody's water consumption goes through the roof. Q's 1 and Q's 4 is when, that's all the water you need to live, right? That's where you put in the water in your home to say, we're flushing toilets, doing the laundry, and doing those things. Q2 and Q3, this is when everybody's yard irrigation gets turned on, and their leaks and stuff are happening, and then we're quantifying and qualifying that how much water they're actually using, and we can go back to them, and we can say to our customers, we have processes in place, and educational pieces in place, we can help you. We're not here to say, you know, we're going to get you for the water, because we want to say, how can we help you save water so we can protect these resources? It's not about building up the water reserve fund, it's about making sure we conserve the water. So, I think just keeping that in perspective and allowing the council to demonstrate that they're actually going to be providing more information to the customer over the next, of course, the next couple of years will be helpful for everybody, so.
Okay, but the other point is the cost factor of putting it in, and then, are you going to have to hire a meter reader?
No. So, what happens is there's the MRX meter reader, there's a meter reader that goes, so these things read like a, they send a signal out of your home every 30 seconds. It's like the old 900 Hz phone. So, what happens is, we can drive through the neighborhood, or we can mount something on top of City Hall, but what we do is drive through the neighborhood in a unit no bigger than, probably a little smaller than the laptop, it drives through and it pulls all the information in, just like from the electrical bills, and then we take that little stick and we plug it into the computer, and it does monthly readings on the homes. So, really, it's fast and efficient. We can do it in less than a day, we can read all the water meters once a month, and our water crew, which currently has the capacity to potentially do electrical meters and water meters with one vehicle, so we'll actually save on that, so.
So, my water bill goes up 40 or 50%, then I can come down and start ripping you guys apart, or what?
When your water bill goes up 40, 50% in the mock billing period, I'd like for you to come see me, and I'll help you figure out how to reduce your consumption.
I won't buy your supper, that's for that.
We'll talk. For example, my home in Beachland with two daughters, and my wife and a female dog and female cat, we had, my bill went up by $17 for the year, and it was a close to half acre property.
You know, you can live with that sort of thing.
And that's really, that's where our council director asked, too, they said to us, how do we take what our current costs are right now, and we want you to try to mimic that under the current rate structure to make sure people's rates are such. And the community has the opportunity, and I would encourage council to say that, in the committee, the whole process, they used to allow the community to come in and talk about the rate structure, because community came in and said, okay, well, what about green credits? I want to grow water in my yard. Council said, create white, so they talked about through that process, they said, well, let's create this process, and they started saying, well, this is quite effective, so at the end of the day, there was a lot of processes put in place, and the community helped build the rates, and they did that through the open office, so they really understood with. And I think what we're keen to understand is that we're undervaluing water. I think that's one of the biggest misconceptions that we have, is we don't hesitate on buying a coffee for a dollar or two during the day, but we would balk at paying, you know, 40 cents a cubic meter for 220 gallons or 1,000 liters of water, you know, that's how we balk it. What we're going to do with that water, we're going to deliver it right to your house so you can turn it on, and, you know what I mean, this is how we really think, but we undervalue what we have in the ground, and I think that if we really put it back in perspective, it would shift the other way and say that that water is way more valuable.
Yeah. My biggest beef, basically, is the fact that I use, as a comparison, I use 100 gallons of water, and I have a neighbor that probably uses 400 gallons of water, because he turns on his sprinklers at 4 o'clock in the morning and lets them run until 7:00. He could practically swim in his yard by the end of the day, which is stupid. And those are the kind of people I think that should be stepped on somehow, and the meter, the only good thing about those meters is that might give you an idea who the hell it is and when to step on them, right?
The council can do that, they can say, okay, for the first, say, 200 cubic meters in that quarter of reading, we'll say, we'll give you the water at this rate, but as soon as you go up to this consumption level, now you're going to pay this rate, this rate, it's going to be discouraging for you to consume that much water. So, they can, they can, the council has all the controls of that place, but it puts it back to the community to say, let's make sure we value our water properly. And you can use it, you just have to pay for it.
Yes.
Go forth and spread the word, Mr. Smith.
I'm sure, sure, what?
Go forth and spread the word.
Oh, spread the word, no. I thought you said the turd, I was.
No, the one I like with the smart, or the semi-smart meters we're putting in can identify leaks like a leaky toilet.
Yeah.
Things like that.
I just, it drives me nuts.
Conflict between.
Yeah. But the whole point of the whole thing is, that most people get upset with, is the fact that our cost of electricity goes up, our cost of gas goes up, the cost of water goes up, the cost of this goes up, and all of a sudden, the guy that can only afford $1,000 a month, has $1,200 a month expenses, how's he going to get by it? You know, you have to stay within a jurisdiction that everybody can effectively live by, so, you know.
Realize the target.
Yeah, well, I get this conversation every morning in A and W, so I thought I would check it out.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
Any further from the gallery?
Just a quick question. Came up in the news recently about net metering and solar power, this was Arizona, but I'm curious, a couple of years back, we had the solar city thing happen, and the provincial government had their effort going, and then they canned that, and so it's kind of stopped here. Will we ever get to that point, if I put stuff on my roof, that I can sell it back to the city?
The last discussion we had about net metering was that the infrastructure was too expensive at this point for the city to put in. It was monthly costed and was prohibitive. You know, I'm certainly, we'd be open to looking back again if there's changes in technology, but it was a bit scary, I don't remember the figures exactly.